I'd like to call this city council meeting of the city of Manassas for September 12th to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Cosner?
Here.
Councilman Nestor?
Present.
Councilperson Thomas?
Here.
Councilor Chakowski?
Here.
Mayor Moser?
Present.
Mayor, we note five present and note a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Pastor Steve Burgess from the Redeemed Life Fellowship Church to lead us in prayer.
Well, I tell you, it's a pleasure to be here today. Anytime I get to come and do something for God, it's a pleasure. You people are so beautiful around here, so loving, kind. And we need that, we need that, especially in our meetings and that here. God keeps us all straight. If we ain't here, he ain't here, you go off on your own. And when you go off on your own, that's when things get messed up. But you keep God in your heart and keep doing it the way he wants you to do it. And I'll tell you what, you're not going to have any problems, none whatsoever. The Lord is good and greatly to be praised. I won't hold you too long, I probably could preach for an hour, but I won't. But I'm glad to be here. I'll just say a short prayer for you and then you can get on your way, alright? Praise you, Lord, praise you. Oh heavenly Father, like I told them, Father, it's a pleasure to be here. It's a pleasure to work for you, oh God. Father, I just want to ask that you would be with them, that you'd guide them, that you'd teach them, because we all need to learn. When we think we don't know it, when we think we know it all, we're in trouble. Don't ever think you know it all. So Father, I thank you for these people here. They give their time, they come and they try to do their best. And I know from the city of Manassas and how things are going, they're doing a pretty good job. So I thank you, Father. Father, you know, I can't get over how good they are. They're loving people, Lord. Lord, you've got a lot of people that love you so very much. And I see Jesus in this meeting, so I know it's going to go great. So all I can ask in my prayer, I'm going to ask you, do what he tells you to do. And ask him how to do it, and he'll tell you the way he wants it done. He won't leave you stranded. He's out there, he won't shame you. You'll never be ashamed when you do for God. When you're at his council meeting, you should be glad you're in the seat you're in. Because it's an honor, God put you there. And it's an honor he puts you there to do a job for him. Don't think you're doing it for any man, you're not. You're doing it for Jesus. After all, he went and died for you. Now, we can die a little bit for him each and every day, you know. When we're working for him and serving him, that little bit of us is dying. So it's like dying a little bit every day for Jesus. So Father, I know they're going to do their best. Bless them, bless them abundantly, Lord, and cause every, all the people who's here, Lord, to be blessed also. Not just the ones leading the meeting, but all the people here. Let them all be blessed. Let them understand, Jesus is the only way. There is no other way. If you don't serve him, you're going to be, end up on the short end of the stick. And I don't want to see that happen. That's why I'm a pastor, because I want to tell people about Jesus. Love him. And he'll, he loves you. He went and died for you, and he didn't know if one person was going to come. He didn't know. And he died for you, but a lot came, thank God. I pray a lot more comes. So Father, Father, I say now, I just ask for everything to go perfect for them in this meeting. I pray that they come up with the decisions that they have to make, that are made wisely, oh God. Made in the understanding of what you want and how your word says life should go on. So Father, you just have them do that, and you just bless them abundantly, Lord. I know you're going to, in Jesus' name. Thank you very much. May the Lord bless you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like for council to review the minutes that have been previously distributed and when ready, make a motion to accept them.
Honorable Mayor, motion to approve the minutes of the previous session of August 22nd, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call or roll?
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment on agenda items only. Hearing none? Is there?
I wanted to ask a question on these modular homes about Westmoreland.
This is not on the agenda.
I thought it was on the agenda. They're going to give, they're going to talk about all of the good things that they're doing.
No, they're talking about something entirely different.
Okay, then I should wait until the next?
You can wait until the end of the meeting.
Ernest Telegraphes. Tony, I know it says, go look at the amendment, but there's $33,000. What's that about, general funds to do what?
What are you talking about?
This is on page three on the bottom. The bottom one, $33,000. Okay, what are they for?
Yeah.
Just give us a label, like what's it for?
Is there a list, Mike, first them?
Is there a redacted?
Thirty-three thousand, I don't want, I don't want itemized this, I just want to know like?
It's not itemized, it's a wish to recognize.
What areas is it covering?
All areas.
Well, what's all areas?
Everything that's not to do with liquid fuels or anything else, why?
Well, what is all areas? The public don't know what all areas is.
You've been coming to meetings, are you missing something?
It's not for me, I'm talking to the public. The public here is going to be what, they're going to be sitting in the pier and just listen to the Lord talking? Now, come on, we need details. So where's this firm going, 33? Now, the first one is self-explanatory, it's going to payroll. Well, what are the second one?
It's everything from copy machine to gasoline to everything the?
This hasn't changed in over four years.
So nothing was added or subtracted, is that what you're telling me?
You're not even making, you're not even making any sense.
No, you said it hasn't changed.
The format has not changed.
Well, the format, I want to know details.
They heard that, they were, what else do you want? You want me to print you out each invoice? We'll happen to do that.
Is this it?
Yes, it's always available up there.
Is that it?
Yes.
The $33,000?
Yes. What part of this are you missing?
The $33,000.
I think you're missing more than that. And I don't think it has to do with the figure either.
Anyway, you can be as defensive as you would like, but?
No, it's nothing, the public has a right to know, no.
If you ask a question to the public, what it's about, they won't have a clue.
No, Ernie, let's get something straight. It's provided, it's always provided, it's always available, it's even online. Would you like us to mail you a copy at home, maybe?
Send me a link in online, because I can't find you guys' phone numbers. Everything's online, it's not there.
Ernie, when you make sense, I'll be happy to help you.
Yeah, well, I don't make sense because I'm not in your collusion, that's why.
No, but you collude for everything else.
Okay, so we're going over here now, recreation amount, why, was there another $1,000 for recreation? What was that for? Is that for planting trees or what?
What are you talking about?
Recreation, this is on page four.
And which one is it, Ernie?
Number D.
Militia to pay invoices to the recreational account.
Yeah, what's that for?
The civic center.
Yeah, what do they do at the civic center, what's that for?
It's different expenditures that the civic center incurred since the last meeting.
And that $1,000 came through in one month.
$1,000 went out.
Yeah, went out. So like, they've been playing basketball, I don't see nobody playing down there.
What does that got to do with heating, electricity and everything?
Where did the expenses come from? I mean, the building's sitting by itself and it starts deteriorating? I just want some?
Do you heat, do you cool your house even if you're not at home?
Oh, so is this all electric?
No, it's not all electric, it's part, it's utilities, it's everything.
Everything, there we go again, everything.
It's the cost of running the civic center.
What's that?
It's the cost of running the civic center.
Well, I'd like to know what these costs are, especially when nobody's in there. Okay, so about the parks, C, is that for trees? To pay $2,000?
It's expenditures.
Okay, for what, was it for trees? See, he shows liquid funds, that's self-explanatory. But when you guys just give me a label with no details, I don't know what it is.
Is there not a list over there of the bills?
Well, I don't know, I'm not going to waste time on them. Have you got the bills, all the invoices that he wrote down?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, because I don't have it.
There should be one at the?
I went up there, all I saw was the last two meetings.
I thought we decided to list, to leave one copy over there if somebody wanted to see it before a meeting. They could take it, and if anybody else requested it, we would just print them off.
Very good, but there is a one copy up there, I was up there, I was looking for it. The last two meeting agendas are up there, and today's agenda, that's all I saw up there.
I'll get you a copy of this, yeah, absolutely. And these are all listed then, every bill is listed within the different sections.
Okay, now?
Ernie, we'll make it just simple for you.
Is that right?
That's my copy.
Alright, thank you.
I have electronic.
Okay, I just want to know where the money's going, that's all. No, one more, Tony. This, um?
Lucky me. Oh, sorry.
This is G, page four, G. It says, pay invoices from the grant fund, $13,000, what's that about? That's G on page four.
The grant fund is?
Police.
What grant is it, I mean, you guys don't detail.
That is the police.
The police.
That is for radios.
Oh, for radios?
Yes, and, Ernie?
Yeah, well, it doesn't say it, I'm glad you said, Ernie.
You want the information, correct?
Yeah.
Did I not just handle you a whole stack of papers?
I know, but I'm not going to read it here.
Well, then, if you're not going to read it, don't ask me questions.
Well, I, I just want to know, just a label.
No, do not ask me questions when stuff is right in front of you, that you physically have.
Okay, well, that's all I wanted to ask about you, because when I see big, large number of funds and all you got is like a, a simple label, that's not enough. But anyway, thanks for giving me your detailed sheet. Anybody else?
Thank you, Ernie.
Does anybody have any correspondence they'd like to bring forth?
No, Mayor.
At this time, I'd like to invite Dan from the neighborhood, from the Westmoreland Community Action Group to explain to us a little bit about what the Neighborhood Partnership Program is.
I'm pretty loud, I don't know if I need to?
Well, it needs to go for the?
Oh, right, right. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me again tonight, it's always a pleasure to be able to come down. The mayor asked me to come talk about the Neighborhood Assistance Program. My name's Dan Juvenelli, I am with Westmoreland Community Action. We have the Welcome Center next door, for example, we're building some houses, we have some Head Start classrooms in the city. We've had it just an outstanding partnership with the city for quite a few years now. And some months ago, we started talking about the possibility of working with the city, ourselves, some community groups, and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on a state tax credit program. So the state offers this program called Neighborhood Assistance Partnership, where businesses can donate and they get a tax credit from the state. And then those funds can be used for a whole variety of things in, in the city that they're targeted at. So we're, started the initial planning for that and exploring whether or not this is something that makes sense. And the big first step on this is we've talked with our partners in the state, we've talked, had some initial conversations. And the next big step is to pull together a community group to help advise on this. One of the nice, the neat things about this, I think, is the state, because it's a tax credit, gives you a whole list of things that are allowed. Since the business that's donating gets a tax credit for it, there's a list of things that are allowed that you can do in it, but the project is really driven by the community helping to identify needs in wherever the project is. So I haven't worked on one in Manassas, but for example, and I can talk of more experience, we had a six-year program in New Kensington that ended last year. And in that program, for example, we helped start a farmer's market, community gardens, we built a couple playgrounds, did a whole bunch of facade grants for businesses through that downtown corridor on Fifth and Constitution Avenue in New Kensington. This program helped pay for tons of new signs and lights and, and things for the businesses there. That was the tail end of COVID, so we helped pay for some things for the small businesses that were having a hard time going electronic on things. Paid for some cash register systems and, and things like that to help small businesses survive the end of COVID. Worked with the city on variety of needs in the city, there's a new camera, I can't think what it's called, a shot recognition camera system in New Kensington that this program helped pay for, all kinds of different things like that. So it's a really exciting opportunity, it's also super early, so we don't really know what it's going to be there. We have to talk to businesses, this is all dependent on businesses donating for it. Now, they get tax credits, it's a good deal for them, but businesses have to put the money up for the program. And then next month, we hope to kick off this community planning process. And through that, we'll identify kind of some target goals. And we'll put that together and start talking to businesses about whether or not they'd be willing to support that. And if, you know, if we're successful in getting commitments from businesses, we go to the Commonwealth and apply for this thing. And a whole lot of good luck and good work in about a year from now is when we would know whether or not it's successful.
Thank you.
That's kind of the short of it. If you're interested, I got my cards here, I can leave them. And I'm not down in this office real often, but you can always talk to that office and they can, they can coordinate. Sammy's our full-time staff member, if you haven't met Sammy, she's there, you know, not all the time, but that's her, her full-time place there. And we're always happy to talk about it and talk about kind of how the planning is going and, and what the community group is kind of developing and looking at.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When you say lighting, what type of lighting did you need? Did you need the street light or did you need the traffic light?
Not traffic lights, so one of the things about the program is it's a tax credit. It's not allowed to pay for things that the city normally pays for. And that's one of the rules of the tax credit. Like we can't, these tax credits can't start, I don't know, cleaning this building, for example. But it can do new projects, so in New Kensington, a lot of the businesses. So there was a corridor that was having some crime issues. And we helped pay for a new project from the police department where they put up cameras to help from that end, but then helped for like decorative lighting for the businesses so the storefronts were lit at night. So a lot of the businesses got new signs and new lights, a couple of them, we helped put in new doors, things like that. And we had an application process, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't willy-nilly, it was, it was grant money, so the businesses got it free and clear. But there was kind of rules in the application and stuff involved with it. Most of them were a couple thousand dollars for each business and, and most of it, a lot of signs. We did a lot of signs, painted the fronts of a lot of buildings.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to ask our solicitor for his report.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everybody. Since the last meeting, I've been working with your city clerk, working on updating some of the city's CDBG policies. Some of the procurement, the purchasing policies needed to be updated. She's going through that, I think that's pretty much complete. Next, there's two tax exemptions that I filed for two city properties. One is 450 Chestnut, the city just acquired that property recently. The other's on tonight's agenda to exonerate some taxes, that's 1049 Knox, those were submitted by my office. The notice of the demolition hearings from the last meeting were sent out a couple weeks. You'll be able to send those to the county for processing. And just as another reminder, make sure you get on the construction management system from PennDOT regarding the Viaduct Project. There's going to be some additional documentation on there that's needed to finalize that agreement. It has to be done by the end of the year. That's all I have.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask our city treasurer if he has anything for us?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Mayor, Councilors, citizens of Manassas, this is my report for August. Garbage fees revenues, current collections in August, we received $3,427.46. Year-to-date, we collected $335,645.14. Budget amount, $350,000. Delinquent garbage fees, August, collected $2,014.86. This includes the amount collected by Portnoy, $1,277.36. Year-to-date, delinquent garbage fees collected, $40,582.67. Amount collected by Portnoy, year-to-date, $16,092.53. Interest and penalties from Portnoy, collected $1,018.49. Budget amount for delinquent garbage fees is $75,000. The budget amount for delinquent penalties and interest from Portnoy is $2,500. Garbage fees collected for 2025, $760. Budget amount, $150,000. Total August collections, $5,442.32. Year-to-date, $378,006.30. Budget amount, $577,500. City real estate taxes revenues, current city real estate tax collected, August, $19,721.43. Year-to-date, $1,917,293.11. Budget amount, $1,600,000. Prior year city taxes collected, year-to-date, $22,044.74. Budget amount, $7,000. Subtotal, year-to-date, taxes collected, $1,939,337.85. Delinquent city taxes collected by Westmoreland County, we received nothing in August. Year-to-date, $163,622. Budget amount, $160,000. City taxes collected, Tax Claim Bureau, total year-to-date taxes, $2,102,344.7. Budget amount, $1,767,000. Distribution is as followed. Year-to-date, the general fund received $1,349,197.37. Budget amount for 2024, $1,113,120. Depth service received, year-to-date, $366,147.2. Budget amount, $302,080. Library fund, year-to-date, received $39,174.59. Budget amount, $32,320. Parks, year-to-date, received $184,818.87. Budget amount, $152,480. Year-to-date, distribution was $1,939,337.85. Budget amount for 2024, $1,600,000. Miscellaneous income, real estate transfer tax, in August, we received $4,303.87. Year-to-date, $40,034.93. Budget amount, $89,333. Earned income tax, August, we received $80,786.20. Year-to-date, $495,161.49. Budget amount for 2024, $682,48. Mercantile tax, we received in August, $1,189.26. Year-to-date, $18,818.76. Budget amount, 2024, $23,425. Local service tax, August, we received $14,538.45. Year-to-date, $54,642.72. Budget amount, $71,072. Tax certification, August, we received $1,220. Year-to-date, $14,760. Budget amount for 2024, $20,000. Municipal lien letters, August, we received $1,350. Year-to-date, $9,375. Budget amount, $17,500. Line usage account, unsecured payments, we received nothing, nothing in August. Year-to-date, $10,568. Line usage fees, August, we received $66,110.68. Year-to-date, $613,144.15. Year-to-date total, $623,712.15. Mayor, that concludes my report for August.
Mayor, motion to accept the Office of City Treasurer's report for garbage fees and city real estates collected for the month of August.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call or roll?
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes. The city controller will have her report at the next meeting. At this time, I'd like to talk a little bit about some of the things that's been going on in the city. First off, good evening, everybody. I come to you with a really heavy heart and some, to share some deeply saddening news. Our community has lost a young and promising member, Julian Napier. Who was just 25 years old, Julian suffered a serious medical issue and despite all efforts was pronounced and deceased at about 10:45 yesterday morning. Julian was a vibrant part of our community and his passing is a profound loss to us all. As we process the difficult news, we extend our deepest sympathies to his family and the loved ones with this challenging time. We are currently awaiting further details regarding the services to honor Julian's memory. And since we have the information on the arrangements, we will share it with you so that you may, so that we may come together to support his family and celebrate his life. Thank you for joining me and keeping Julian's family in our, in our thoughts and our prayers. I'd like to just spend just a moment in silence. Thank you. So our activity around the city is continuing, and something that's going to take place here very soon is there's a culvert in front of Bart's and what used to be Rick's Polishing up there on Grand Street. There is a culvert that's on one side of Bart's and it needs to connect to the line that we have running down Parente. The only way to do that is to run it through the street, which means that Grand Street is going to have some, some construction on it. One-way traffic will be in place during this construction process, there'll be flaggers there. It's going to be trying for everybody, we're going to try to keep the shop open for the gas station for Bart's and his activities. He's an important part of what we've got going on. But we will be reduced to one lane for the most part. This is going to take six weeks, so it's not going to be just a, you know, a real quick thing, process, it's going to take some time, so. I ask for the city to have some patience with that project. I attended the initial district meeting of a project that Westmoreland has embarked upon called Reimagine Westmoreland County. This is hosted by Jason Rigoni, Director of Westmoreland County Planning and Development. The goal of this is really to foster a better relationship with neighboring communities. And what they did is they broke up the county into about eight different districts. And the two of the districts have already met and had their findings. This is the third of the districts that they're going to now. We just started ours last month and it'll continue for a couple of months. But if you really think about it, we all have a shared demographic relationship between everybody. What we do here may be the largest in our district, Menneson, but we have a lot of the same problems as North Bel Vernon or Ross Raver or any of the communities that are part of our group. I think that's an important thing that we've got going on. This past week, we also met with the company ONL and S&amp;H Properties. They are a unique investment group that are focused on housing, both renovation and new construction. And they're currently evaluating Menneson as an investment opportunity. I'll keep everybody informed as to how that goes along as well. There's two properties that came to the city from the repository. Both of these properties, the person who wants to buy them are from out of state. It's my opinion that I think that those people need to come before council and explain to us what their intentions are before we approve these sales. We don't need any more slum lords or property that's being neglected by people from out of state. So, we've sent letters to them. They will be here next council meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask Lois, if she'd be so kind as to read the rest of the motions I have.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to make a motion to approve Contractor's Application Number Five for payment for MCSP Inc. for Sewer Rehabilitation Phase Three C. Replacement of Grand Boulevard Pipe and CCP Lining of Parente Boulevard Pipes in an amount of $83,940.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve change order number three, Project MON 2022-03, with an effective increase in the contract price to Insight Pipe Contracting LLC in an amount of $4,319.66.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve sewer rehabilitation project phase three payment requisition and certificate number 23 in a total amount of $97,048.11 for phase three work performed during the month of August 2024. The individual invoices will be paid in WEC Inc. in an amount of $13,144.11 and in MCSP Inc. in an amount of $83,904.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Question, how far are we along on this project for phase three? Are we?
Phase three is really at the very end of it. We're trying to wind this up very quickly. There's still some money left for the grant project and there'll be some work continuing on for the next, probably till spring of next year.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve the celebration of Halloween within the city of Menneson with the holiday parade on Wednesday, October 23rd, and the city of Menneson commencing at 6:30 PM at First and Donner Avenue with the parade starting at 7:00 PM. Trick or treating in the city will be on October 26, 2024, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve a return of fees to Lucero Property Investments for a diet test fee of $30, which was not required for the property.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve submission of an authorized official resolution in City of Menneson to request a Category Four Facilities Local Share Assessment Grant from the Commonwealth Financing Agency for utilization for equipment, programs, and services within the city of Menneson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
In English? What's this for?
The application for the LSA county-related grants that we're going to go for here.
Which title, which encompasses what?
Looking at equipment for the fire companies at this moment, two trucks, some additional equipment, so we're putting the final list together and we'll submit that, but we have to have the initial part of this LSA application approved by council to move forward. You'll have the details on the amounts, Councilman, probably by the next meeting. We will, yes.
Any other questions?
Shouldn't be matching. It should be just a grant. I just wanted everybody to know.
There's no matching.
I just want everybody to know what the grant was for.
Okay.
Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve exoneration of city taxes for city-owned and tax-exempt properties as follows. 2002-03-0040, that's $544 Donner, in an amount of $2,642.65. 2002-03-0019-567 and 575 Donner Avenue, in an amount of $1,182.8. 2002-03-0018577 to 583 Donner Avenue, in an amount of $18,804.58. 2002-03-0038, 554 to 560 Donner Avenue, in an amount of $4,567.8. 2002-06-0181, 920 to 922 Knox Avenue, in an amount of $134.50. 2002-07-0193, 434 Claridown Avenue, in an amount of $355.66. 2002-06-0816, 1049 Knox Avenue, in an amount of $1,706.18.
Are there any questions? Is there a second first?
Second.
Are there any questions? Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes. At this time, it's time for Councilman Chakowski to give his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to transfer $71,977.34 from the general account to the payroll account for payroll issues from August 27, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay following invoices from the general fund in the amount of $33,211.95. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay following invoices for the parks fund in the amount of $2,035.77. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the recreational account in the amount of $1,046.32. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the liquid fuels account in the amount of $3,217.73. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from line usage account in the amount of All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the grants fund in the amount of $13,199.60. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment F.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Make a motion to transfer $69,288.65 from the general account to the payroll account for payroll allocations for September 12, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to transfer $2,500 from the general account to the healthcare account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
These are the following balances in the accounts. American Rescue Fund, $66,273.70. Debt Service Fund is $1,135,386.14. Fire Escrow has $21,482.40. General Fund has $706,783.62. Grand Fund has $78,637.27. Healthcare Fund has $3,306.25. Line Usage has $688,309.38. Liquid Fuels has $64,683.3. Parks Fund has $178,680.72. Payroll has $26,994.12. Recreation has $4,234.74. And the Refuge has $115,190.14. And Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Thomas for her report.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to defer the reading of our streets and public improvement report for the month ending August 24, 2024, to our next meeting on September 26.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Nester, would you like to give us your report?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of council, members of administrative staff, citizens of Menneson. I will be abstaining from my report to the next stated meeting.
Thank you.
I yield the floor. Thank you.
Councilperson Cosner, would you like to give us your report?
Well, I would like to defer my report to the next meeting as well, but I do have a few announcements if I can make them.
Me too.
We have some pretty exciting events coming up in the next month. I just wanted everybody to be aware of them and give you a chance to attend if you're interested. The Hall of Fame that's being held at Menneson High School is October 12 from 6:00 to 8:30 PM honoring past graduates in six different categories. On October 15, the library luncheon is being held at St. Spiritan at noon, and that is always a really fun event. October 19, the Greater Menneson Historical Society is hosting their Founder's Day Dinner from 5:00 to 9:00 at St. Vincent de Paul. So, I hope to see everybody there.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment directed to the mayor on any items relating to the business ordinances, statutes, resolutions of our daily work product and attention of the city of Menneson.
Mayor Delmore Apple, municipal fire chief, for once as a child of 11 in my family, I'm going to go first before I give the microphone down. Yeah, how about that? A couple of things. One, while we're on the saying prayer things, everyone knows Coach Francis, his house burned before I came here this evening for the meeting, so keep him and his thoughts, keep him and your thoughts in prayers. Luckily, it could have been a lot worse. We thought somebody was in the house at first, but they were not. We did a thorough search and it turned out good. Second off, I want to commend Mike for his work on the LSA with getting the resolutions ready and everything. I really appreciate that. Last, but not least, the fire truck that was sitting at Hilltop at the club, the ladder truck was donated to Westmoreland Community College last evening, so help further education throughout the community, so we got some good out of it. Thanks again.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, I got about four issues here. Can you tell me Attorney Del Fronto, the CBJ, G, whatever? Where are we as far as being able to use that money to make road improvements? Have you got that far yet?
I don't administer it.
But they made the statement last time, 70% of it could be made.
First off, we'll have another public meeting coming up in the next couple of weeks for the two meetings. At that time, we hope to have budgetary numbers associated with all the items that were brought up the first meeting. But some very interesting things have transpired. First off, a lot of talk was done about Nine Street. Turns out, we've got money already budgeted, 2023 money, to take care of Nine Street. And I've asked our city engineer to immediately start preparing specifications and estimates and so forth for the repaving of Nine Street. That'll include sidewalks and everything, two lanes up and two lanes down, and try to return that back to the way it used to be with new pavement, new sidewalks, new steps.
Okay, I just want to bring the attorney up to date that when he is negotiating and filling out, make sure he puts in road improvements as a top priority.
That's not what the attorney does.
Well, I hope he comes across that in his literature. Anyway. I want to know, the building next to Douglas School, it didn't look like it was.
There's lots of Douglas Schools. Give me an address.
Okay, the beauty salon on Scootermaker.
Okay.
They knocked down that building. What was the reason for that?
It was very dilapidated. It was determined that it was not rehabilitable.
Whose property is that? Does that belong to Jeff?
No, it belongs to the land bank.
Land bank, okay. I just want to make sure there wasn't some special interest involved. Mr. Saxton, Treasurer, can you tell me, because every time you give a report, it seems like that collection agency in Philadelphia, what's his name?
Portnoy.
Yeah. They come in with small numbers, 500, 1,000. What percentage goes to us?
I don't have that in my report right now, but I will gladly get it to you, but I gave you figures on what they do collect and what they do give to the city.
What percentage?
But they gotta make a profit on their end also.
Okay, but what percentage is it?
All the money that he's reporting is money that goes into our culverts. That's what he's reporting.
Okay, what I'm saying, if they're only picking up like 500, 1,000 a month, there's Okay, what I'm saying, if they're only picking up like five hundred, a thousand dollars a month, there's no sense having it. We could have a coffee hour and collect that much money.
More people are paying their taxes than what they're, what they're supposed to pay, so there's not that much of a collection anymore. Now, some things take time, so some things are probably still in litigation.
How much time are we gonna give that firm to prove themselves? I know.
Till the subject is resolved.
And how much did they bring in for the city? It's good to this other issue here. Do you guys wanna just do cosmetic jobs on the city without taking into account of what sort of perception the general public gets that isn't part of your inner side group? Saturday, you guys had a bunch of booths and tents lining up at Donner, where the health club was. And it looked like it was a bazaar in Third World India, and it was just terrible. Anybody who got money ain't gonna come in and, and stop. That's all I know. I don't know if you saw this, Jerry. Okay? I mean, it was terrible. And, um, I got this picture so anybody can look at it. I mean, that, that doesn't, that doesn't invite anybody from the outside to come in and become part of the, uh, the, uh, community. Uh, we already have a problem with the school district, like they're number fourteen from the bottom of five hundred and ninety-nine schools in Pennsylvania. So what are we gonna use to bring people in? We're not doing any industry. We're just doing these little tidbits that make it look like there's some activity. The general public that I saw that was attracted were people that had only pennies and change in their pockets. I didn't see anybody over forty thousand dollars a year stopping down and admiring what they had to offer. And one of it, what happened to RVE? Now, this gentleman's gonna, um, over here, he has, uh, opportunities to bring in grant money. That other company you had last week or last August, what is RVE doing? I thought they were supposed to be bringing in grants.
They're working on several, but the primary purpose of the thing they've been concentrating on recently is the CDBG.
So they're the primary, uh, funder for CB?
They are, that's what we hired him for, is to prepare our application and administer the CDBG account.
I thought CBD also got funds from, from another source. They weren't waiting for C, RVE.
No, CDBG is a CDBG account. That is a state account from DCED.
So there's only one entity that could bring money in?
No, we can have as many as we want, but that is one of the sources. That is one source. It's a very complicated source.
Well, and then my last question is, what are you gonna do now since Julian is no longer with us? What are you gonna do to get it going for the winter season that's coming?
Well, we're gonna have to talk about that and figure out a plan. It just happened yesterday. I'm not, I'm not willing to go there right now.
But there has to be backup plans. Like, I'm on the, uh, planning commission, two times they postponed us getting together, okay? Each time I said, yeah, I'm available, and then I get a call the same day, uh, no, we can't do it. And then when I go to call the one number, you can't leave no message. So I, I don't know what kind of people you got involved to be part of your inner circle. But all I know is this, if you need to clean house and get new people involved, that's gonna step up and do something.
Thank you.
My name's Elmer Matusi. I live at twelve oh two Nass Avenue. I appreciate your, your work to councilmen and councilwomen and, uh, mayor that you have to do here. And everybody else that's up there. What I'm here about is something really trivial. Um, I called the mayor today. I talked to him. In my alley, behind my house, I have a person at the end of the alley. He got his, um, trailer there. He dumped his wood there. I've been waiting a couple of weeks, hopefully remove all that stuff out of the alley. Then my neighbor, she got some wood off of her, and it's stuck in at the other end of the alley. She blocking the alley. I know there are codes for this. There's a right away there, and I just thought I'd bring it up. Will you please do something about that?
Yeah, and we actually did. The code officer went up there, investigated it. He did see the problem, and he's working on it right now.
Okay, I appreciate that. I didn't really want to do this, but I figured I could tell you this off.
Thank you.
I don't think I need a microphone. Everybody can hear me pretty good.
No, 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 no.
I'm Jason Drake. I'm the president of Ukrainian Club, and I have just paid a permit for sidewalk openings, which is not. We didn't do an opening. We did a replacement. According to this, it says any opening or any curb opening, which we didn't, we just replaced the sidewalk, is four hundred dollars per thirty feet. We paid four hundred dollars for our permit so far, all right? Uh, the other question is, like, looking through here, any other place and anywhere else is not even. It's a dollar per foot. We've done eighty feet of sidewalk. We're planning on doing that, and we're paying four hundred dollars. I need to see, somebody needs to look into this. I think somebody read something wrong here. This is yours, City of Menneson. Okay.
Do you want me?
You can or I can?
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. Drake, for stopping down. Um, from our discussions that we figured out, and I think we had a consensus of probably refunding you that money.
Okay, the other question we wanna do is put a parking lot across from our building in an empty lot we purchased, okay? Um, I asked Marvin, Yo-Yo, and you people right here, is it possible that we can do that? We're not gonna pave it right away. We don't have sixty thousand dollars. We have enough funds that we can gravel it, stone it, and we're thinking maybe the haunted house can use it, we can use it, and therefore.
They already have, they already have a curb opening at that section too, so I, I don't see.
We're not gonna be entering exit nine oh six. We're just gonna, we're gonna put a fence up along there or something.
Six foot of lawn.
All I ask is you can run it through our code offs, make sure the zoning and everything is proper, but other than that, I don't have an issue.
Right. We're not gonna be on, we're gonna be on First Street.
Is there an entrance on?
Yeah, First Street.
On the state road, though?
No.
So it's gonna be off of State Road?
Yeah, we're on First Street.
On First Street.
Enter, exit, First Street.
And the road's already.
You don't have anything.
Yeah, what's that far, Mr. Apple? Sixteen branch?
No, I think that, quite honestly, we have, we have some issues associated with our, our thing. We inherited a rate schedule and an ordinance that's been around for quite some time. I think that council as a whole has, has commissioned our, our solicitor to look into this. There are certain things such as, when you talk about street openings, that includes sidewalks and streets. That's not appropriate. There ought to be something for sidewalks. There ought to be something for streets. There's little, little distinguishing things like that that we need to look at, and we need to make it where it encourages people to do things as opposed to discouraging. So we're definitely working on a new ordinance over the course of the next few meetings. It'll be introduced and we'll get something going.
Uh, one more thing. Okay, Leo, I got one more thing. These trucks are leaving nine oh six, coming onto our property, over top the sidewalk. They busted it all up, coming down First Street and entering the mill. Okay, and if, the mayor, I think that, who, I think that's who it was, was up there? He's not here.
I'm the mayor.
Well, then, you had somebody else up there that measured with a tape, and I don't know who he is.
That would've been our code officer.
It probably been Marvin.
Marvin, no, I know Marvin. There was somebody else with a beard.
Oh, that might have been Tony Vitale.
Yeah, it could've been our engineer.
He measured and all that, and we tried to get the mill involved. We were gonna repair it, but I, we can't do it now, as you understand. And it's all busted up from these trucks running over it. They went between the billboard and the stop sign and drove right through there. That's why we replaced that sidewalk. Anyway, I'm saying somebody's gotta look into the mill, see what's going on there.
I'd be happy to try to.
Why can't they just go all the way down around where the circles at and come in and then turn and they go right into the mill gate?
Right.
Instead of trying, 'cause there's a car there. There's somebody who's gonna get their car dragged right around the corner. That's all I got for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm concerned about the modular housing. We never had an open house advertisement in the paper. And then there's a one, recent one that I can compare it to that was, uh, the PA Career Link sets open house. They get two, two days to do it. So we didn't even know. I would've gone down and asked a million questions about this thing. Who came up with the asinine idea of putting modular homes on Mother Row Avenue?
Well, first off, modular homes are, meet all the IBC requirements for construction. These are not.
So I'll address that. Go ahead.
Well, you can more address whatever you want to, but they do meet all the requirements of a normal home. They meet a standard building.
Why would we do that? That falls under the scam.
It falls under no scam. It falls under no scam.
Well, let me finish.
Let me talk. You asked me a question. I'm trying to answer you.
You never answered any of the time, so go ahead, answer. I'm happy.
Thank you very much. Now be quiet for a second. Be quiet, be quiet.
I'll be quiet if you don't mumble.
These houses meet all the requirements that are of a standard stick-built house. In fact, they are standard stick-built houses. The only difference is they're built in a, in a factory where they can be moved here. These lots are long, narrow lots, and therefore you have to have a, a structure that will fit into it that meets our code and ordinances, our zoning ordinances. So hence the, the overall structure of the houses. You cannot have development in a community without having residents. You can invite all the businesses you want to, but if there's no business, if there's no residents to go to them, you've got nothing. It's been proven over and over again, you start with the residents. That's what we're trying to do.
You start business and they will come. Number one.
Talk to anybody that's been in development. No.
No, this is a bad move simply because Highland Manor has four apartments left over. It's soon to be done. Co-owner Joe Delfonso of the Valley Independent, Mont Valley Independent, is on the Housing Authority of Westmoreland County, and he knows that that's gonna happen. Now, we're done with low-income housing in that section of the city at this point. Linda had asked about, why don't we pave that road? They haven't paved that road because they know Highland Manor is going out the door. Number one. Number two, this falls under, when we did these concrete canopies in the seventies, Mr. Saxon verified, 'cause he had one in front of his establishment, we don't need modular housing. You condemned me for the housing that we had through the Westmoreland County, um, and I belonged to it for fifteen years. Uh, it was who then? Now it's Westmoreland Community Action. Now, they're gonna get these, allegedly, they are the ones that came up with.
What is your problem with modular homes? What is exactly your problem?
Well, I'm gonna tell you what. The guy that you got to do this dream home sale, they're not, they're not recommended by the Better Business Bureau. Are they the ones that are gonna do it?
First off.
Wait a minute.
The city is, the city is.
The city's project.
This is not the city's project. This is a.
Okay, you do that all the time. Ask the county, and they said it's on the city.
This is not the city's project.
Whose project is it?
Westmoreland Community Action.
Okay, they said no.
They own the property.
They own the property?
How did they get the property? From the city?
From the city and the land bank.
Okay, from the city via redevelopment authority?
No.
Okay, I'm just asking a question. You're answering, but it's a good question.
No, they got it directly from the city. Two properties from the city, three properties from the land bank.
Okay, I, number one, I don't think modular is the way to go.
What is your problem with modular? No, there's no, as long as any house will.
That is not the type of housing that we need in Menneson. We need to get, number one, we need business.
What's the difference between that type of house and any other type of house we have in the city?
The houses on the old junior, senior high school property, they're, they're homes. There are ten. And your friend, Urim, said that they're a hundred yards apart, which they're only about ten yards, or not even ten yards apart. That whole property is about a hundred yards. Those are nice homes. You condemned me and made snide remarks about me. I was on the Westmoreland Community Action board for fifteen years. Tay Walton Ball was the head guy. He retired. Unfortunately, he passed away in December. Uh, the new, uh, new woman in there, um, I don't know where they got this modular, but you're saying them, and I'm gonna try to meet with them if I can, because that makes absolutely no sense. And they're talking about putting more on after that? Now, the person that you got to do it is not accredited by the Better Business Bureau. Do they know that?
They hired them.
Okay, then I've gotta talk with them.
Where are you confused at with this, Ted?
No, 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 I'm not confused at all. I'm saying, don't build them.
You said you, the city hired this company. The city did not.
No, no, you, who, who did it? I asked the question.
Westmoreland Community Action for the, the time.
You answered the question, and I'm saying that we don't want this company to come into Menneson. They're not approved by Better Business Bureau. I don't care if you did it in the city or they did it at Westmoreland Community Action. There's something behind the scenes that's occurring again where we got another scam going on. We don't need these people to come in.
It has nothing to do with the city.
Well, I think some of it does, although it's behind the scenes and not transparent. The other thing is, is I heard just recently, it's a rumor, Mark Plour is applying for a two-hundred thousand dollar grant? From the Shade Tree Commission? I just heard, I just heard about it today. Mark Plour is applying for the grant.
The Shade Tree Commission is applying, Ted.
Why, why are they and not, not RVE?
Well, it was done months ago. Yeah. It's been submitted.
Then why didn't Urban Design Ventures do it?
Because it's not a part of a CDBG grant. It's a standing grant that we.
Yeah, a separate grant in Urban Design got separate grants also.
It's a DCNR grant that we went after, so it's in the process, and it should be awarded by, we're hoping.
But why did he apply for the grant?
We did it months ago.
Before RV was, was even processed.
I'm sorry, well, my question is, he's probably gonna run for city council next year. This is like something to add to his credentials. Mark Plour. I mean, the picture in the paper, the whole nine yards, let's face it. Let's go back to the CDBG funding. When Tony brought up about the eighteen percent, that is the threshold. He was told, and you were told several times, as well as Cheryl Gordon, that this was a threshold, and there were other grants that were obtained by Urban Design Ventures.
There was no other grants in the last five years.
You embellish things so you make, we gotta go after RVE because all these guys are charging us to the roof.
Let me tell you a little, little story about the Civic, the Civic Center, just as an example. The Civic Center, we, we did a CDBG project to put up a handicap ramp. Urban Design provided the engineering specification, everything about it. You know what the problem with that is? It's not to IBC standards. The handicap ramp is, is got a problem. That handicap ramp is not a handicap accessible.
That's the construction people.
No, that was the specifications. It came from Urban Design.
I'll check on that.
Please do. Please do.
I will, I, you know, I can't argue the point. I have enough facts to prove or disprove that. Uh, and you did say, and I miss, uh, heard what you said about the CDBG funding was three hundred and forty thousand. It's three oh four. I checked that out. You were correct. Uh, the property that you asked about, next to Jeff's Beauty School or whatever like that, Josh Lindsay took properties that were worse than that and made them nice. He went up to Brian Lawrence, thirty-five hundred dollars, and he would not give him the property. He could've renovated that property.
Maybe so, but that's the problem between him and the county.
Your answer when they built the storage shed, it's a business. My answer to you now is Josh Lindsay, who came here and asked for that property, would've said, hey, I'll put a business in there. What's the difference?
Do you understand what the power of a land bank is?
I know what the land bank is. Every time I go to them, they tell me to come to you.
Well, maybe.
Every time I come to you, they tell me to go to them.
Sorry, but the land, maybe, but it's the land bank that has the power. I'm not the land bank.
The last thing, um, Jason Rigoni, if he's gonna help us, why'd he take Wyatt out of the end of town there and put it in a business development in Westmoreland County? You're supposed to bring business into the county, not take it from poor little old Menneson and shut it up.
The purpose of the reimagining in Westmoreland County is a, is a policy of trying to build collaboration between communities.
Yeah, we're getting burned on it too.
Well, I don't believe that.
We are. You know, we lost that property. We lost that business. Oh, for a hundred job.
Yeah, my name is Pino. I got thrown out twice out of this meeting. I wanna clear up something. The last time I got thrown out is because they were cutting in on his territory while he was talking, and I said, let him talk, and there was a preacher here, like the last guy that was here for five minutes, and I told him, let him finish. And they kept cutting in on him, so I said, so the mayor don't like me, so he threw me out. That's fine, but I'm not going away nowhere. I'm in Menneson. I'm staying in Menneson.
What are you asking the council?
Okay, now, let me finish. Let me start by saying, uh, I got some problems that I think it needs to be fixed. Perenny Boulevard looks like crap, and I've been talking about those vehicles parked there next to the Hungarian Club, laying, laying there. It looks like garbage. And I think that's your job and your job, right? Street? Who's in charge of the street?
Cars?
You?
I have nothing to do with the cars being parked.
But you're in charge of the street?
Yes, I am.
Well, clean the damn street up.
What do you mean?
Because it's loaded, it's loaded with, down the cops.
But if there's cars, the police are the ones that address the cars if they're abandoned. Okay, that's not the streets department to do that.
Well, I'm telling you, that is the street department.
No, but that's, no, that's not the department. I'm not gonna argue with you, Pino.
You can't pick the gravy. You can't pick the gravy and take the bats up. There's nothing to argue about. That's what you need to do.
I don't argue with you.
You need to clean that damn street up.
I don't argue.
She explained that it's not her job.
That's on Perenny Boulevard, on Knox Avenue. That's next to your street on the other side, and you say your street looks good. I say, go to Knox. When you go to Knox, from Rusaki onto the old PNA, if you recall with PNA, it's totally a mess.
Yep.
It's parked the wrong way. Where the hell is the cop? Where the hell is the chief? You in charge of the chief. Tell him. You told him to throw me out. Tell him to do his goddamn job, okay?
Okay.
On Knox, that's a perfect new street. You told me, let me finish now. You're done with me. You're done with me.
Pino, I don't come arguing.
Knox Avenue, when you come from Rostraver to Reed, where she lives, great. Looks good. You go from Rostraver the other way, okay, it looks a mess.
Yeah, and we've got that on the agenda for CDBG. We're, one of the discussion items at the end of the month.
It looks a mess. Rostraver Street, when you go.
We also have Rostraver on, as on the agenda to do something with Rostraver.
No, we're talking Rostraver Street. No, I mean, you can stay, you can stay here and take everything up. All I, all I can tell you is this, when you come to Menneson, the only thing that I see in Menneson is you turn the whole damn downtown down. You ain't putting nothing in. You made it a garbage dump. I remember coming to this country in nineteen sixty-one, Menneson, PA. We might've had some dust with the mill, but we had a guy there in downtown and uptown. We had people that cared, no people that didn't care. You guys look like chickens sometimes. All you guys do is like, yes. Everything they say, you just say, yes. But look at that for a change. Now, I wanna go to something else. The drugs in Menneson. What are you gonna do about it? Where's your cops? What are you gonna do with the drugs in Menneson? Right on my street!
The cops have been very active.
Right on that bullshit. They ain't doing nothing. And that's, that's because you tell them nothing.
I don't, I, I don't tell them no such thing. I don't, I, I don't tell them no, it's such a thing.
Police don't wanna do their job, but just because you tell the chief, you do what I say.
Okay, calm, calm, calm down. Calm down. Calm down.
Go ahead. I'm listening. What are you gonna do about the drugs?
The police are working on it. Thank you.
What'd you say?
The police are working on it. Thank you.
Okay, now, I wanna talk a little bit about it. Pino, they, they've been working in Monessin, and I know that the water, the sewage had to be picked, because the water lines in Monessin are being picked, and the strength in Montraver, they blow up. I understand, I can put up the back room, right? Now, we don't know if you guys are familiar with Montraver. The streets are not very walkable, so there's one way you're going in, one way you're coming out. Who, who sits, well, let me ask you a better question. When they shut the road, when, when people's gas shut the gas, shut the road on Third Street, who told them to shut the road? When they were fixing it. You were bitching.
On Third Street?
Yeah.
They were managing their construction. They, they had flagmen while they were working that they, they controlled the traffic.
Yeah, but you didn't even know they closed the street, and you said you were gonna do something about it.
No, we got to the point that they had to close the street, allow the pavement to cool.
Okay, in Montraver, you got five hard-working guys on that crew. I gotta say that. Not the water through, but the contract, okay? When you go into there, the guy jumps out of a truck and directs traffic. He hoes. They choose back away and go the wrong way. That's what he hoes. I don't do that. One way. When you learn how to, at least when I graduated from Monessin, I learned how to read. Nineteen sixty-eight. Okay, so I don't know the rest of it, but anyway, that's the worst contract ever. Did you have a pre-pit meeting before they come into the plan?
We did, and there's lots of activity that's gonna be occurring on Mont Raver as well. There's lots of activity that will be occurring on Mont Raver as well.
They never closed any road. They never had a, a flagman there, ever.
They've had flagmen there. They've had...
One man on, only when it happened in Rostrave. Don't tell me that BS, because I lived there. Only in Rostrave. When they were working on Rostrave, they, they put a flagman there. The rest of the time, they had zero.
Okay, wrap it up. What else you got?
What, what, why don't you tell the pre...
'Cause I'm not gonna sit here and get yelled at all night long.
I hadn't listened to you yet for five minutes, man.
Okay.
And now you're gonna tell me to wrap it up. I'm not done with it. When do you have your pre-pit meeting? Okay, with the car job? What is it you lay out?
That's conducted by our engineering group, WEC.
What do you lay out?
What, what?
What do you do? What is your part?
I sit there and just listen.
Oh, you just listen?
I just listen. It's, it's run by the engineer.
The cops don't come there between the hours of eight o'clock in the morning and five o'clock in the afternoon. There's no cop to be found, because the place is a total mess. Cars are going the wrong way, coming and going. After six o'clock and the workers leave, the cops show up. Maybe once, maybe twice that day. So this is what I gotta tell you. I know you're not from town, and I know we're gonna get your ass out of here, okay, but at the end of the day, okay, you ain't done nothing for the downtown Monessin. You haven't done nothing for the streets in Monessin. You haven't got any good grants, because you guys can't write it. You got somebody else writing it. But for trees, we need trees in Monessin. That's what we need. We don't need business. We need trees. You know, and all those committees that you have, every one of the committees that you put people in place, where are they?
If you're gonna sit there and make insults on me or the council all night long, it's time for you to quit.
It's not insulting. I'm telling you the facts. Well, you don't like the truth? That's what's happening. I live in Monessin. I've been here, goddamn, sixty years.
I'm sorry you don't appreciate it.
I don't appreciate you, because you're garbage.
Now you're talking insults.
Oh, I'm telling you, that isn't insulting, because you're trash.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Linda Lacy, Maple Avenue, Monessin, PA.
Mm-hmm.
I've been coming to these meetings for a very long time, since I moved back here, since I think two thousand nine.
Mm-hmm.
And over the course, I have not seen, I've seen some improvements, don't get me wrong, but I find out that I went through three or four administrations, and every administration has their own agenda. But it's not for the side of town that I live on. I live on the Westgate side of town, and the Westgate is the reason that we get CDBG money. And none of that money has been utilized on this side of town. Now, I, granted, when I left school, I left here, and I was gone forty-four plus years. So every administration before that had ample time to do something about Westgate, and they never did. And I just wanted to say that, because I don't know what went on for the forty-four years that I was gone, but I do know it shows it. Now, I understand we're utilizing and got Ninth Street Park back to where people can use it.
So that was CDBG money, so there, you're wrong already. We have spent some money there.
But this is after forty years.
But that's what we've done, well, what we did.
But this is forty years late.
Maybe, but that's what we did.
My thing is now...
I can't do anything forty years ago, but I can do things today.
I understand that, mayor, but like I'm saying, I've been a resident back here, well, I grew up here, but I've been a resident back here since two thousand and six, and I'm tired of being abused. City Council has a double standard, and I'm feeling it right now, because I have gotten things done to me. When they found out that I owned a building in Monessin, I have been harassed about it. The building's been vacant for twenty years, and now they're trying to take it from me for taxes, which is eight thousand dollars. And I went to you when you had this tax honoration problem. Now, if you are a one hundred percent charitable organization, I don't know what the connection is to you and Westmoreland County Tax Bureau.
None.
But I'm investigating all of it, because I should not have been taxed on that building at all.
That's between you and the tax assessor.
Well, I understand that, but you knew it, too. We are a tax exempt five oh one, three C organization, one hundred percent charitable, and we should not have been taxed. And I've been up there three times, meeting with them, and they always give me the runaround, and I'm wondering why.
I can't, I can't do anything about that.
No, you've been, wait a minute, you tried to sabotage me.
No, I didn't.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did.
When, where, how?
I won't go into this publicly, 'cause I'm not gonna bash you in public, 'cause I'm not that type of person, but I do know what you have done. And second of all, who is paying for that project on Grand Boulevard?
What project on Grand Boulevard?
You said that they're gonna dig up Grand Boulevard and it's gonna be closed. Did you say Grand?
Grand, Grand, not Graham, Grant, Grant, in front of Bart's, up on top of the, on the other side of the hill.
Is that not Grand Boulevard?
It's by City Park. No, that's Grand Boulevard.
Grand.
Oh, so Grant, Grand Boulevard is different than the part of Grand Boulevard up by City Park?
This is Grand Boulevard. You were saying Graham.
No, I said Grand Boulevard.
Okay, well, Grand Boulevard, yeah, what about it? That is a part of our Phase Three sewer project.
Okay, was that money already dedicated to that?
Yeah, it was demanded by DEP. It's not, not allocated. It was demanded.
Okay.
It's the decree that we had to do that.
Okay. Now, did anybody come up to where that seventy thousand dollars that was allocated to fix Tenth Street? Did anybody figure out where it went?
We know exactly where it is, and you come to the meeting in two weeks, and we can figure out how we're gonna reallocate it.
Well, when I, when I asked you about Tenth Street, the money was there to do it, you said that you were taking it and putting it on Third Street.
Yes, we got money left over on Third Street.
Well, Third Street is a two hundred and, what, two hundred and forty thousand dollar project?
No, two hundred and two.
And then, from Tenth Street to Mc, was it McMahon, is seventy thousand dollars, and you took that money to go, to, to do a bigger project on Third Street?
You've been going to the CDBG money, the meetings. You know exactly how the money's being allocated, and we're gonna have the reallocation money...
Well, I was fine with it, mayor, when you said that you had allocated money to pave it, and then a year later, you're taking it away. And then I asked you to put it back, and I asked you to pave it. So what, what's the point of fixing up Ninth Street when nobody has anywhere to park? You put fountains in there? People wanna utilize the park?
How many people use Ninth Street versus how many people use that section of Tenth?
It doesn't matter.
It does matter. It matters very much.
Wait a minute, there's a, did you know there was a name on a street up there?
Yes.
That people do live there? They do go there? They do travel that road to get to wherever they're going back there, even though that one section of Highland Manor is only being used? Well, I go vote back there. That's my poll, where I vote. So I think it needs to be fixed.
Okay, thank you.
And I can meet you in your office in private and tell you what you did.
Please do. No, you've had your chance.
Mayor, motion to adjourn tonight's meeting of September twelfth, seven fifty-one PM.
Is there a second? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The meeting is adjourned.
I never, I never, I never heard five people up here start the screen note at the same time when you grab that microphone.